Good evening, this is the February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three town council meeting. Call the roll please.
Councilmember Augurton. Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elklam.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bray.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Here. First item is executive session, council discussion consultation, direction to legal advice from the town attorney pursuant to A R S. Paragraph for section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three, A three and four regarding potential water service contract with the owner of A P N. Two eleven dash fifty-two dash zero one four G in Desert Hills. Number two is council discussion consultation, direction to illegal advice from the town attorney pursuant to A R S. Thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three, A and three and four regarding Cave Creek Carefree Municipal Court I G A. Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Executive session. And I surprised our A V person I can see. Sorry, Brian. We'll start off with the pledge allegiance, and we have a distinguished colleague, ex-colleague here. I wonder if you'd lead us, Paul.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Public announcements, any from council?
McGuire. Yes. I'd like to note that the current issue of the Center on News has two articles about the Cave Creek Museum. I think this is a credit to the changes that have come about there over the last couple of years. The museum went through some difficult times and they've come roaring back better than ever. So they're looking for volunteers and they're honoring our veterans with the special Veterans Garden. To the inauguration of which everyone is invited. The other thing I wish to notice is that we have a celebrity among us tonight. This is the current issues of stroll Cave Creek change in name. And it's got a great article about questions and answers by our new mayor, who was probably too reluctant to bring this to modest.
Embarrassed, my dear.
Other announcements?
I just want to point out that if you hadn't been paying attention, just look around. It's great. The desert's greening up awfully nice. Unfortunately, most of that is that stink net stuff that dries out and burns, and we've had plenty of water to get, get the stuff to grow tall again. So don't come by my place. I hadn't done it yet, but I'll get on it real quick.
I'm getting there.
I have a couple announcements. First of all, the vice mayor and I have been meeting with and talking with our state legislatures. There's a particular bill that would just take the, the heart out of a lot of our revenue, and that's a bill that would exempt or prohibit imposing sales tax on food items. And we get about a million and a half dollars a year out of our thirteen million dollar general fund comes from that tax. And what we've told the legislatures is we just put on five and a half billion dollars worth of fire and emergency protection for this town without any new taxes. And now they kind of pull the rug out perundrous with something like this. And we're going into budget time. So it's going to make it very interesting if this passes and goes to the governor. The second thing is there's been a lot of concern over the state lands contract, and that is going to be on a future agenda item. Both the facts behind it, how it works and what's in it. So stay tuned for that. And another issue that's, that's very hot is traffic. I personally get more complaints about traffic than everything else combined, including my own neighborhood. So that is also on our list of items to be tackled here shortly. Next, we have call to the public.
Paul DeFenter.
Paul DeFenter, seven, six, four, five, each island. I'm here today to ask you to help make Cave Creek more like Arizona and less like California and Washington, D.C. Currently, we, Washington, D.C., California and Maryland mandate residential fire sprinklers. Arizona, the majority of states prohibit fire sprinkler mandates. Cave Creek, Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, Fair East Valley, Cottonwood.
Were grandfathered in when Arizona passed a law prohibiting mandates in two thousand and nine. I've been told this all about saving lives. According to the National Safety Council, there were one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred deaths in homes in the year twenty twenty. Of those one hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-nine thousand plus were from poisoning, sixty-two percent. Deaths from falls, twenty-eight thousand, that's twenty-five percent. Those two categories were followed by choking, fires, suffocation and drowning. Each was less than three percent. Twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-eight hundred and fifty U.S. residential fire deaths. Arizona averages about forty-nine a year. Bathtub drownings in the U.S. per year, three hundred plus. You can save a lot more lives if you mandated all chemicals and medications be locked up in a safe and that require all homes to be single story with no steps or slippery tile fours. And nobody would get to use a ladder unless it was surrounded by airbags. I'm asking the town council to rescind the requirement for fire sprinklers in residential homes. Personal safety should just be that. It's up to the individual and personal, not the government. Thank you. And I'm going to leave. I've got citations for the stats on there. I'll leave it.
Thank you, Dave. That's it. Okay, we have the town manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We are, have planned a joint meeting between the Cave Creek Town Council and our local business owners. We are in the process of getting all of the businesses notified of the session that is scheduled for ten a.m. on Thursday, February twenty-third here at Town Hall. This will be a wonderful opportunity to engage with our business community, inform them of the many good things the town is doing as well as our challenges. We've invited the rodeo committee president to give a brief presentation, and we want to hear from our business owners so that we can keep the line of communication open, address any issues or concerns they may have, and encourage them to continue to work together with the town and each other. The Cave Creek rodeo days is fast approaching and the parade is scheduled for Saturday, March eighteenth. An all bowls, all night event has been added this year for the first time Thursday night, March twenty-third, and the full rodeo is Friday, March twenty-fourth through Sunday, March twenty-sixth. And we have scheduled our brush drop off for residents of Cave Creek. This is no cost to our residents to help clean up their properties and provide defensible space. The first one is scheduled March eleventh and the second is March eighth. They're both from eight a.m. through noon. And these dates are coordinated with Mayor Copa County. They also provide drop off dates down at their transfer facilities. So there are other opportunities for residents to drop off their brush and debris cleaned up from their property. So that's all I have tonight.
Would you confirm the two dates for the brush drop off?
March eleven and April eight.
April eight.
Eight a.m. to noon for residents only.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question of carry on that issue. You know, not every resident has a truck or a trailer to take their materials to the site. Is there ever the possibility that we could look into having a vehicle drive through our neighborhoods to collect such, such materials to make it more convenient for those of us who don't have a truck?
We could look into that, Vice Mayor. We did have incidents during cleanup after the fire, and we provided dumpsters for those to, for residents to put their, to dispose of their waste, whatever, whatever it was. It wasn't confined to just the brush. And, but it was for a very limited time because people started dumping there. So.
I remember that, and that was very useful and helpful, and that's all I'm trying to suggest here, too. Because again, I don't have a truck and we have all kinds of materials on our property. And so I don't have any way to get it to the dump site. So I'm sure I'm not the only one in this predicament. So if we could look into the cost, it may be cost prohibitive, but I think it's worth considering.
Okay, on the consent agenda, we have the approval of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular council meeting minutes. And I'm looking for a motion to improve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? The eyes have it. Under general agenda items, council consideration, possible approval of the special event application for Cave Creek Bike Week during the period of March twenty-fourth to April second, two thousand and twenty-three. It's placed on the agenda by the town marshal.
You may advise mayor, members of council. Before you, we have a special event application for Bike Week this year. Bike Week, Saturday, March twenty-fifth and Sunday, April second. As part of Bike Week, we are requesting, or I should say the roadhouse and the highway are requesting road closure on Cave Creek Road, twenty-five, twenty-sixth, March. Road closures would then come off of the roadway, then road closure would go on March thirtieth through April second. It's the same traffic control plan we've been using for the past few years, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Of course, we'd be monitoring the traffic and as conditions permit, we would tighten the loosen those zones as well. Mr. Speaker, approve, please.
Questions from council?
I guess my only question would be just clarification on what is the cost to the town for our supporting of this event?
There is no cost to the town. The, the financial burden is bear by the businesses that bring Bike Week, Vice Mayor and Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
How many businesses sponsor? Is, is it just the hideaway in the roadhouse or the others too?
There are other businesses.
Okay. Okay, so we're looking for an agenda item. We've had our questions and looking for a motion on this.
I'll make the motion.
Excuse me. Thank you.
No one wishes to speak. There is no one.
There is none.
Back to the motion. Motion to approve the special event application for Cave Creek Bike Week during the period of March twenty-fourth through April second, second twenty-three.
Go second. You have the motion you'd like to discuss to comment?
I heard a comment just recently that last year's Bike Week was one of the best organized yet in terms of traffic management. So I applaud you, everybody who's involved in it, and we're looking forward to another safe and secure event this year.
And the second, just want to say that historically, this, this event starts out at Westworld where what seventy-five thousand people show up or something like that, and they've made Cave Creek part of their, part of their experience. Over the years, it's become part of what they come here for. And for us not to approve this, you're going to have the people anyway. You think you got pandemonium now, you'd certainly have it then when you weren't prepared for it. So I wholeheartedly support this, this application.
I think many of us through the years have seen a major inconvenience become considerably mitigated by the organization of this event. We've made great progress.
I'd just like to make sure that we take into account the noise ordinance and we don't disturb the neighbors when we can.
Anyone else? Well, my, my issues are keep the traffic moving, keep pedestrians controlled and safe. Seeing no further comments, this is not financial. So I guess we're ready. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation of the quarterly fire and emergency medical report placed on the agenda by the director of community risk reduction.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. We're here tonight to give you the quarterly report. This is actually the second quarter report for the fiscal year starting twenty-two, twenty-three. I have Chief Ryan Tobin with me tonight again from Daisy Mountain Fire Department. If there's any questions that I can't answer or any comments that he'd like to make, he's welcome to do so. So we're here to kind of give you an update on what's been happening with the fire department. The report, if we can go, Brian, does this work? Are you going to do it for me? Need to turn it on. Okay, we're in trouble already.
He's a fire, he's a firefighter. Give him a bigger hammer.
Okay. Bigger hammers and anvils will take care of it. Okay, so anyway, this is the, again, the second quarter report. And the reason I bring that up is because the first slide, which is all the numbers that we have, and we've been tracking very closely. It was brought to my attention and rightly so that it's a little bit confusing. The second quarter is October through December, and for the quarter, you can see the number of calls that we had there, one hundred and twenty-one EMS calls, one hundred and fifty-six total for the town during that timeframe. And the year to dates and the year to date percentage on the end is actually the calendar year to date because we finally have one full calendar year of information that we can compare now and start our comparisons. So future reports, that percentage will just stay for the current fiscal year. But I wanted to give you the calendar year numbers so that people can see what happened during this past year, our first full year of providing that service. And that was an additional handout that I had Teresa give out to the council. It shows you what we did per month and then the totals for the year. So if there's any questions on that stuff, or if I got that, made that confusing or more confusing than it needed to be, I apologize for that. I will clean that up and we'll just go fiscal year, fiscal year, and I'll do a separate report for calendar years from now on out, from here on out, if that's okay with the mayor and council. Okay, so, so for this, this past year, I just wanted to highlight that we, in the town of Cave Creek, we had six hundred and thirty total calls for service. Below that, if you go to the highlight below that, for those six hundred and thirty calls, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-six units assigned to, to Cave Creek and to the region that came in to assist with those calls. And where that comes up is if, remember, a few council meetings ago, I gave you a printout of what, what it takes for a residential structure fire and what it takes for a rescue. So more than one unit comes for those things. So for the, those six hundred and thirty calls, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-six units come. And then for the year, our Cave Creek unit assisted in the region on forty-eight additional calls. That's to Phoenix and Scottsdale and the other areas of Daisy Mountain. We were called in to back that up. If you recall, a few months ago, we might have talked about the, the actual firefighter rescue that we supported for Tatum Ranch on the working house fire when they had collapsed on there. Our crews were second do or third doing there. So we helped with all that. Below that is the training hours. We track very closely the training hours for, especially for our new firefighters. We'll talk about that a little bit more here. And for the I S O grading, we just completed the insurance service organizations, Verisk, did a complete evaluation of the service for Cave Creek. We don't have those reports back yet, but we're expecting those to be the same or better than what they were previously. We have saw improvements in dispatch. We saw improvements in training. We saw improvements in resources to come to our incidents. All that information was given to the insurance industry, and so we're waiting for those reports to come back. The next slide is our, there are two slides that we put up. One is the quarter and one is the annual incidents. So you can see the percentage. Again, we're running at about seventy percent or better are emergency medical calls. For the year, I think our structure calls or our fire calls were about twelve percent, which is about correct. Structure calls make up about four to five percent of those calls. So our most common call type of incident is an emergency medical call, and that runs from heart attacks to strokes to the trail rescues are in that and car accidents, and we've had some pretty significant car accidents in the area lately. And then I'm going to go to our quarterly notes, and we'll spend a little bit of time on this. This is what's been occurring here. First is we did submit for the Firehouse Foundation grant for the assistance on the equipment to help us with trail rescues. As you know, we had several pretty significant incidents during this past summer. We were approved for the grant. We submitted in October. We were just found out that we were approved for that grant. So I'll be coming back to you at the next council meeting with approval to accept that grant for about twenty, a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars to get the additional equipment to help with those. Along with Daisy Mountain, we participated in the National Forest Service cooperative meetings where we're looking at the fire risk. Where they talk about what, what's going to happen this year, what the projections are for this year. We are invited to those and we go and attend those and helps us come up with what, what our programs need to be. You had the Abraza one-year celebration. In November, Daisy Mountain assisted us, the town, with doing free CPR training for regional volunteers. We worked through the volunteer network in Cave Creek and at least taught them how to use the A E Ds and how to do CPR. It was a very, the people that attended were thrilled. We just need to get more people there. We ended up having about, I guess I want to say chief, if you, probably about twenty to twenty-five people in the three classes or four classes, we gave it all in one day. But we need to get more volunteers there. So at least our volunteers that are helping with the, the Holland Center and helping with the museum and helping with the visitor centers all know how to use the A E Ds and, and CPR. And if you've been, if you're any sports fan at all, I don't know if any of you are or not. You understand that that's turned into a much bigger deal with the incident that happened at the football game with the one player that went down. And because of instant constant compression and CPR on that young gentleman survived that football, that football game, if you've heard about that. And there's a big push nationwide to do some of this additional training, Abraza, not Abraza, excuse me. Holland Center has indicated they would be willing to host more of those for us if we can get the instructors together. So we'll do that.
If you have one, I'll go.
So we'll post it again on, on the website. The first one was poke, focused more for the actual volunteers, but the second one and the additional ones we do will open it up more to the public and anybody that wants to go. You, you got the ton of Cave Creek emergency plan, and then chief, I'm going to have you talk a little bit about the recruits that we hired because they've been doing excellent. You've been hearing from me. They've been doing excellent, but I'm going to let the chief talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Jim, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It is an important milestone for us on December seventh, where all of the recruit class that we hired to staff the Cave Creek Fire Station has, we call on the fire service, their final evaluations. This is their last hoop that they have to jump through before they become permanent full-time members of the firing department. All of us remember our final evaluation today, and all of us remember getting through it because it's, it's a lot of stress. But I am pleased to tell you that every single one of the members that we hired for the, to provide service here to Cave Creek all passed with, by the way, flying colors. Now, the significance of that is if you remember, we hired rural metro employees some had worked here and some had worked in Carefree and other places throughout the rural metro's service area. We put them through what was called the Bridge Academy. It was the first time it was ever used in the automatic aid system where we recognized some of the credentials that the firefighters already had. There were some specific credentials that they had to have to enter the Bridge Academy. It was a very intensive, fast-paced initial firefighter training program. And we put a lot into it, and it was a lot at risk to making sure that in the end, we would produce a similar, if not better, result than we would after fourteen to sixteen weeks. And I can tell you that our response to that is that we accomplished all of those goals. That we hired some really, really good people that will be with us for a long time. Recall that recruit class, Fast and Furious. That's what they nicknamed themselves when they went through the training academy, and they've proven to be exceptional firefighters. So we're pretty proud of that.
Yeah, I believe in your packet is a outline of the skills that those, those folks had to complete to, to get their certifications. I think that was in your packet. Did I put that in there, Teresa? Okay, and so if anybody wants to see that, we can, we can show that to you. I did. There it is. There's the class. That's them showing up in the morning for their final test down at the Phoenix Fire Academy. And this is just a quick snapshot of some of those skills. And if you'll, you'll notice, if you look closely, all of those, almost all those skills are timed. This is a high-pressure event for them, either pass or fail. And they, they did terrific. They were all down there for pretty much the whole day. It takes to go through that and go through all the different skills that are outlined in the packet that you have.
These are valley-wide, system-wide, what we call minimum company standards, that every firefighter, every fire company has to perform at a minimum level. And that's why we use stop signs, even though you think it's okay, but that's how you evaluate the ability for us to do some of the functions that we have to on the fire ground, and that's why it's so important for everybody to have the same training at the beginning and all the way through for the regional system. We all use the same standards from, from Phoenix all the way to Castle.
And then so to kind of wrap up, again, the two things, we, we did complete the I S O grading. That information is in, we're waiting for that to come back. And then I will come to the next meeting with a, a council action item to approve the grant funding from Firehouse Foundation subs. And so we'll be happy to take any question that you might have about what's happened this last quarter or where we're going.
Question from council. I have a bunch of them.
Well, the response to people who have the traffic issues, injuries, where are those happening? And is there a way we should know to mitigate those issues?
I'll give you, my anecdotal response to that is that it happens everywhere. And it's usually, not always, but usually a result of driver error. And so that's what makes the system so, so good is if it happens further west on, on Carefree Highway, we'll have resources from there. If it happens further east, we'll have resources from Scottsdale, if we need help. It's, it's just all over the place. And the two things that most often impact it, well, there's three. The most often impacted is impairment in speed and not paying attention. And those things depend on this specific situation. If you happen to hit a, a high voltage power pole that's not going to move, then you're going to lose that, that encounter. So the biggest thing we got to do is keep people from hitting each other. Now, for the Bike Week that's coming up that you heard about, we did, or chief got a grant last year for ten thousand from the Arizona Department of Highway Safety. And we will once again put out these signs that you saw last year for the first time saying beware motorcyclists and prepare for that. And we've actually got a lot of good feedback from that last year from people saying this made me not think just about motorcycles, but what about horses and what about other things that I should be careful when I'm driving? So we'll put those signs out again for the, those events that are coming up. But in all honesty, it's, the message just keeps coming out from the state and from the governor and everybody to pay attention when you drive and, and don't be distracted. That's, that's the biggest issue that I see. Chief, I don't know if you want to comment on that.
No, I agree with everything you said. And there's no, there's no epicenter of one specific location where we've been anymore than, or any less than others that live in high-traffic areas. Right. Lot more cars that drive on a daily basis. You get more accidents than that just by sheer numbers. But I would say there's nothing that you can draw a conclusion to, similar to when law enforcement is here and you have lots of statistics about crime. There's not that, there's not that many to really draw a conclusion from.
No, we've, I've heard about reports that the Carefree Now, we've, I've heard about uh reports that the Carefree Cave Creek intersection is one that's particularly dangerous. We're all aware of uh Cave Creek and Schoolhouse Road. Change hasn't been made at both of those, but. They're places that drivers really need to be careful. Some people obey the laws and some people don't, and they both pay the price.
And that probably comes back to volume as chief mentioned, it's easily our most busy intersection that we have in town. It's Cape Creek and Carefree Highway.
Thank you.
Speaking of signage, uh, do we have a permanent sign on our new fire station yet?
Nope, we don't.
Do we know when we might?
Um, that was gonna go in when we did the remodel, but we could actually look at moving that up a little bit if we, if you wanted me to do that, Mayor and Vice Mayor, we can. Get the sign on the station. But that was, as the remodel has taken a little bit longer than, than I talked, we talked a little bit last council meeting about that. But as far as the signage, we can, we can look at the signage and move it up if you'd like.
It's not urgent, it's just that, and if you're waiting uh for, for cost benefit reasons, that would make sense.
I, I will get back to the mayor and council and everybody.
I have a couple of questions. Both Fountain Hills and Carefree are going, what we are going through, what we did. A year and a half ago, they're, they're, they're both switching over, considering switching over from rural metro to something else and. Uh, Carefree's doing one thing and uh Fountain Hills doing something different. But uh, I, 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 I just can't help but notice the angst they're going through. Uh, editorials and how are we gonna pay for it and what's, you know, uh. Any comments on, on those things?
I'll make a comment person, Mayor and Vice Mayor, if I can make the first comment on that. Carefree has reached out to the town of Cave Creek and has asked if we would be willing to come and. Um, present at their next council meeting, which happens to be tomorrow night. Uh, Tom manager and myself are gonna go. And answer their questions about um how our process went and how we did some of the things that we did. Why we did some of the things we did and um where we're at and how we feel about the transition and how it's worked so far. So we will go and, and give that information to them. Um, Carefree has uh a little bit different. They're similar, but they're different, as you can imagine. Uh, Cave Creek was able to put through the whole process and the whole project with the funding that you had available. Carefree uh did not have that funding. One, one of the things about Carefree that's interesting is. Um, the discussion is, do we do the property tax or not the property tax? And they voted to take it out to the count, to the citizens. But the issue is that even if they vote it down, Carefree still doesn't have enough money to pay for the rural metro contract. They're still shy of money. So they're, either way that they go, they're gonna have to do something. Whether it's uh the property tax or not, and that's the way they've decided to address this. At least that's my understanding. And Chief Tobin, you've talked with Carefree a little bit also and um, give your comments.
Mister Mayor member of the council, just so you know, I've participated in both of those processes. Uh, early on, Daisy Mountain was invited to participate in the Carefree Citizens Advisory Committee. So myself, Tom Shannon and other members of the automatic aid system were active participants in, in their process. Where their committee came to the same uh conclusion that they should uh pursue uh creating a fire department that meets the standards of the automatic aid system. That was the Citizens Advisory Committee. As you said, uh, in December, their council voted six to zero. To put the property tax to the ballot to fund such an endeavor and to uh, they put a uh. Also passed a resolution to dedicate the funds from the property tax to fire and EMS protection. So. Uh, we participated with Carefree Fountain Hills went a different, took a different approach. They hired a professional consultant. Uh, to provide a report to the mayor and council there. We again participated with uh that. Uh, professional consultant, as did other members of the automatic aid system, including Scottsdale and others. Uh, to pr- prepare the report that that uh, the Fountain Hills Council also came to the same conclusion and they voted to per, to move in a direction. Uh, away from rural metro, a little bit different. I don't know whether their goal right away is automatic aid there, but they're definitely. Uh, took a position to transition away from rural metro and gave them a notice of uh to terminate their contract at a certain date. So we participated in both of those processes.
So they, they, they did not make the call early as in contrast to what we did to go to automatic aid there, they Fountain Hills has not decided on Medicaid yet.
Mister Mayor, uh, none that, nothing that I have watched and I watched their council meetings. That it indicate that they were committed to the automatic aid system. They did commit. To moving away from the rural metro corporation, which means they have to hire their own firefighters. They have to get a di- different dispatch system, a different communication system. And provide different training. So they're headed down that direction. Uh, there's lots, as you know, requirements to join the automatic aid system that I don't know whether they've fully committed to that yet. But I would say they're taking the steps towards that probably in a transitional way. Without putting words in.
Thank you. Uh, the second question is ISO, uh, if, uh, do you do a good enough job to get us lower fire insurance cost in town? Is, you have any idea there?
Well, Mister Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I absolutely believe I did. We did, I'm sorry, we did. Um, it was, it, it's a very long and drawn-out process and they look at a lot of things. Um, the, the grading is pretty simple. It's your fire service is fifty percent of your score. It's a hundred point score. Your fire service fifty percent of your score, your um water department is forty percent of your score, ten percent is dispatch. And now you get additional points added on if you have the up-to-date codes and, and uh. Community risk measures and we've taken several of those. So just looking at the, I was able to get the pass grading. And just looking at it and looking at where I believe we picked up points. Um, if we didn't move up an, an A grade, then I'd be surprised, but it's hard to tell because there's a, a thing you know, they call divergence. Which nobody has any clue how those numbers come out and it's the difference between your water system and your fire department. And how, how much of a variance there is. And so um, I'm familiar with that from other great things that I've done. But it's a, I'm not on the ISO Christmas card list because I challenged their, their greetings every time. And I, and I'll probably challenge them again this time because it, it's interesting how they figure out some of their stuff. But the grading scale works from a one to a ten with ten being the poor or no fire service, one being the very best you can have. Currently, um, Cave Creek is at a four and we, I'm working towards getting this to a three is what I believe we can do. And um, the biggest change in that though is with commercial insurance, residential insurance, once you get below a five. There's not that much of a change, unfortunately. There's a little bit. But there is a big difference between a five and a, let's say a nine or a ten. There's a huge difference. So. Um, those folks that are on the brink where we can show we have the hot water and the water tenders and all that type of thing. Um, we'll have a, a big difference if, if that'll go through.
Last question, uh, we're headed into the hot weather again. Uh, is, has the county taken action on trail safety signage? What, what uh? We, of course, we, we were, we responded to those trail safety incidents last September.
Yeah. Um, Mister Mayor and members of the council. We still need to set up a joint meeting between the county and the tunnel forest. Who I've heard actually has some funding for additional trail markings and things like that, so that we make it a consistent. Um, product throughout the, the preserves, the preserve and the county park and the, the forest. And I haven't done that yet, so that's on my, that's on my to-do list. I will give you an update as soon as I can get you on it. I need to get that sk- that meeting scheduled with those folks.
Yeah, that's questions. There is public comment on this.
Oh, we shouldn't speak.
Well, we have one.
Mister Phelps.
So David Phelps here, uh, tonight, we had a request to speak of, called to the public. About dropping the fire. Uh, sprinkler requirement for the town. Would that affect our insurance rating? If we were to approach that and consider it and actually rescind that ordinance. That would be a part of the evaluation, but residential sprinklers currently are not a large part of that. What, that's more into community risk reduction. Do you have the current and best codes? And the ordinances and codes that the town has is some of the best in the country. So we'll get full credit for that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so um, we are ready for a motion. Oh, sorry, excuse me, there's a discussion only, so I guess we're, we're finished if everyone else had any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Tobin, thank you very much for coming out. Item three is continued from uh twelve, five, twenty, twenty-two, council discussion approval of the second reading of ordinance zero. Or oh, two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, five, and ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Amending the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance, chapter twelve entitled site plans. Section twelve dot two entitled procedures, so subsection A, number seven and eight, and section twelve point seven title amendments and expiration. Sections D and E establishing. An effective date and providing for repeal and separability placed on the agenda by the planning director. And I see he's joined by the chair of the planning commission, Mister Brechner, welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of council. This is the second reading. Um, of, there's actually three ordinances that if adopted effectively do the same thing. Um, last year, the uh planning department was uh asked by the planning commission to investigate. The, the process and procedure by which site plans are reviewed and um. Also asked to provide a recommendation um to the council. To remove the planning commission from the uh oversight of a site plan review application. Um, following the first reading, based on the comments from council, the, you were initially given two options. One would effectively make all site plan review for commercial properties administrative. And the other option was to eliminate the planning commission, but keep the town council. Under the consent agenda for, for all site plans moving forward. So bring your attention to page sixty-two of your, of your packet. Um, the first of the three ordinance uh chapters that are um. Part of this discussion would uh, item seven and eight would remove the planning commission as they recommended. And council gave first reading to. Um, would remove that from. From future consideration. So this is the, the first of three text amendments or three chapters rather. That uh council is, is reviewing tonight. I've also asked the chairman of the planning commission, who at that time was the vice chairman. Um, to be here this evening and we can answer any questions that council can have.
Joe, comment before we start, Mister Brechner?
Just happy to be here.
Questions from council.
Mayor, I have a question and a comment.
Go ahead, Councilor Elkman.
Okay, um. These items, A twenty-two oh one, A twenty-two oh two, and A twenty-two oh three. Present a wonderful opportunity for staff and council. These items ask us to create greater efficiency in the use of our ordinances. Sharpening our ordinances through examination and revision is a general plan goal and an element of our proposed strategic plan. I ask that we consider slowing down and taking a close look at how to reach a process for complete review and refresh of our ordinances. With items eight, twenty, two, oh, one, oh, two, and oh, three, we're being asked to remove site plans. Review, I'm sorry, from a transparent and public process and place our approval on the consent agenda. I have great respect for our staff and the work they do. They check, check at applications against our bulk regulations. But here's the problem. Many of our regulations are relics of Maricopa County when Cave Creek was a wide spot behind Black Mountain. Our town has changed in many ways since nineteen eighty-six and our regulations need an active and informed review. Revisiting revising ordinances one element at a time. As is suggested tonight, when there are only a few is easy. But Cave Creek has grown in size and complexity and we know it will continue to grow. Our public has asked for ordinance review. And in the general plan, it's on page thirty. And the recent strategic plan study group, they both proposed the same action. A comprehensive review is needed. Let's not rush to action on these, but rather let's find a comprehensive direction that will serve us into the future. I'm suggesting that we not approve a suggestion for less transparency, but rather that we look at the whole ordinance package. Let's involve our changed community and lead in the direction that is current and prudent. Let's slow down. We need to take a look around for best practices and then act deliberately to be inclusive, transparent with our governance. Thanks.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Please, Mayor.
Uh, I'd like to hear a response. Good, thank you.
You know, um. No matter what the ordinances might say or be changed to or anything. It doesn't change the analysis of whether the planning commission or the town council has any discretion over. A site plan that is in compliance with whatever our codes may be, whether they're changed, not changed, doesn't matter. So really what this is about is a situation where we have no discretion. Why are we taking up our time? With this, you know, by the time it reaches the planning commission, the town council. Staff has already reviewed it. They attest to the planning commission and to council that it's in compliance. We have no ability to say no. So even if we change it to anything, we have no ability to say no. This is a, it's a waste of time.
Do you think that the current ordinances, first of all, um. Are they the same ordinances that were created by Maricopa County? I, have they been updated since then?
Yes, absolutely.
And so um, do you also think that by, by, if we were to approve this? La- uh, lack of a site review, site plan review by the plan commission that equals to a lack of transparency by this council?
Uh, Mayor members of council, no, it does not. Um, because as, as I stated previously, this would go to the town council still. Uh, you were given options, you can make it administrative and, and we did take a look around and see what best practices are in other communities. And the vast majority of them, site plans where the uses are allowed, they're not asking for any variance from, from the regulations of the ordinance that are set forth. Um, those are all handled administratively for the most part by and large.
I see that you did, I, I was looking through the paperwork. So that's found on page sixty-five where you actually um. Analyzed a variety of other communities and how they approach this process.
That is correct.
So if anybody was interested in seeing how Sedona and Scottsdale and Wickenburg and Queen Creek and Carefree and Paradise Valley, et cetera. Uh, approach site plan reviews, they could find it in the um associated materials that were in this packet.
Correct, Vice Mayor, and, and I was asked to do that. And anytime I'm asked to look at what other communities do, I, I do so begrudgingly because I'm a Cave Creek. Uh, kid at heart. Um, so I really don't care what other communities do, but.
Well, it's considered, isn't that considered part of best practices?
Sure.
To see what our neighboring communities do.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, so what, you know, really what the, the chair. Spoke of is, is completely accurate for the council as well. Uh, the commission doesn't have discretion when it comes to a site plan. The council doesn't either. The, so meeting in the middle bees, is the ability to see it on a consent agenda. And if council wishes to pull it from the consent agenda and discuss it, um, it can be done at, at that time. Uh, the other thing with it being on a consent agenda, we would still advertise it as we've done for site plans of all, you know, for planning commission and council. So there's still an opportunity to inform the neighbors of, of development on a commercial property uh around them. So. There, there isn't a, the, we're not removing um transparency.
And, and you, towards the transparency issue, you know, is this, we, we talked at length at the first reading of this. And one of the issues that's problematic with the transparency is the mistaken belief by the public. That they may have a say, you know, where they may show up, say, I don't like that business. I don't want that here. You know, they think that they can actually. I don't want that here. You know, they think that they can actually change the outcome and that we're letting them down by saying yes. When that's not the case at all, we would be sued. We, we cannot say no. To a property owner who is seeking an allowed use in full compliance of our codes and ordinances. We simply cannot say no. So by creating an environment that makes it look like we can say no, it's even worse. You know, so we're, we're, we're just making it harder on ourselves. You know, so in addition to staff time, commission time, council time, applicant being delayed. When they're just exercising their rights with no changes or variances or exceptions or anything. This seems to be a, I'll call it a no brainer.
One last question, Dusty, sorry. I'm sorry. All right, what was I gonna ask? You go ahead and I'll think of my question.
So I, I think. I don't want to put words in other people's mouth, but I, I think what you're sensing some unease by the council in that. Is there a way that we could amend the town code? Which I think was what the Mr. Elkman was going for. And making sure that we have some, something in place like a style guide or something. Because I think most of the complaints that I've seen from people aren't uses so much what the property is going to be used for. But what the building is going to look like. Could we create a commercial? Style guide or something that would say, here's that when you build a commercial facility or you renovate your commercial facility, here's where it should look like.
Mayor, Vice Mayor. Commission member Rhodes, sorry, I'm still working through names and seats. It's been attempted in the past, but that's really not germane to this specific request. And which is the text amendments and the site plan process. But that's something that can be discussed at a later date.
Let's say I think it is relevant to the site plan process, because when you do the site plan, that's where you're going to show what the building looks like. So I, I think it is pertinent, and I think that's kind of what we're all getting at. Where does the public have the opportunity to say? You know, it doesn't fit with the character of the town, it doesn't fit with our style guide, it doesn't fit wherever. And I, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I mean, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. But, but I think that's kind of the sensing I'm getting from, from just body language and everything else from the, from the audience also.
There's actually, there's no requirement that they submit elevation drawings or anything of the building for a site plan review. Would be the simple response.
But we could do that, right?
Under the current zoning ordinance, no.
No, we could change the zoning ordinance to do that, correct? And I think that's what we're talking about with looking at reviewing the ordinances to make sure that we're, you know, doing things that way. And yes, it would be a little bit extra, extra work for you to and the rest of the planning commission. So I, I think what you're, if I may. I think what you're getting at is some kind of design guidelines. And, you know, is, is what you were getting, yeah. And, you know, I believe we have certain. Guidelines regarding, you know, types of materials and so on. But I, I don't believe that there's been any. Push towards a design guideline as far as commercial structures in our town and limiting what property owners. Could put on their property in terms of design. And I don't know whether that would create any legal implications. If council might want to chime in.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Design guidelines are very difficult to implement. And some jurisdictions, Sedona has tried to implement à la turquoise golden arches. But the minute you go down the path of design guidelines, you tread a very difficult. You, you, you have a difficult, one, the property owner needs to have a due process right to know what the standards are. You have some generic guidelines now that I think are not enforceable. I mean, they just, they're sort of, they're sort of a sense of what this should look like, and I don't think they apply to commercial. But if your, your request is that the zone is to revise this, the, the zoning code. To adopt design guidelines, we, we would have to, we would have to amend the code. And you're right, this would be the time to enforce that. But the question is, if you make it too rigid. Then you can't say no. It's the point he made, is if truly it's an objective standard and you've defined the design guidelines that you like, and the question is. Can the seven of you agree upon design guidelines? Once you do, then the minute a property owner argues she's satisfied them, you can't say no as a matter of due process. Alternatively, if it's, if it's so generic, she will say, I don't know what you want, therefore it's unenforceable. So the problem is, we could do design guidelines. You have very generic design guidelines now. I think that's intentional to let, to, to sort of let the planning. Back then, the, the commission, now you. But right now you do not have, you do not, I don't think you have objective, discreet guidelines. If you wish to have them, we can. But that will, you'll be embarking on a process to figure out what those are and how you wish to enforce them. The right, the right would be a site plan, you're right. That would be subjective, and I don't even know if the commission wants to get involved in that.
It's, you know, it flows back to what I was saying is, if we create, you know, some guide. If we create. Change. If we, if we change the guidelines to something else, that's, you know, some objective standards of design. We're still left with, is the applicant in compliance? Yes, we can't say no. You know. It, it doesn't, nothing that, that we change here changes the argument for whether we should be reviewing site plans. That are in compliance with our codes or not, you know. We have no discretion, whatever we change them to. I understand that. Okay. But part of the issue. That I've heard from several folks is they want to be able to make sure that they can object when something comes in that doesn't. Absolutely. So, and I know it's not you. I know it's not necessarily the staff, that's not fair to you either. So how do we do that? And that's when, that's why I was suggesting that maybe, or I would suggest that maybe we defer this. I don't know that we can, but we take this up when, when we schedule a joint session with the planning commission. Town staff will probably be there, I would hope. And we may be able to sort out something like that. If I, if I could make one more comment to that, you know, what we specifically were wanting to do is retain. Any discretionary items for which the public could object to and have a voice and a say. To absolutely retain that at the planning mission council, that's where the residents have their teeth. That's where they have their opportunity, not where there's something that's an application that meets the code that is a, it's a ministerial act we're talking about here. Not something that does, I want a voice, no. We can't.
Say to my question. And, and speaking of ministerial actions, Luke, could you run us through quickly the process? That it takes to review and approve a site plan?
Have to go back to my notes here. It's in, it's in the packet, but I.
I know, but not everybody read it, who might be in the audience even. So I'm just curious because there also are. Questions about. Checks and balances. If you are the only one who is looking at the application and then approving it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Ray, no, I'm not by any means the only person that reviews this. Within town hall, the building official reviews for compliance. With, with fire, fire suppression, the fire code.
Excuse me, can I interrupt that? But doesn't that person report to you now?
Yes, the town engineer does not report to me. Yet, hell. But the, the town engineer gets involved for civil grading and drainage review. And to, to make sure the site retains the amount of storm water that's required. The utilities manager, Sean Cruz Weisner, also reviews for utility and wastewater compliance. And then just internally in staff alone. Bambi looks at it for pathway connections and the implications to the overall trail system of the town. And then Stephen Paralisis has been typically administering the site plan review from a pre-op conference, which is submitted typically. Four to six months ahead of us, an actual site plan application where a lot of those things are. For compliance, you know, setbacks, building height, parking, all of those things are also reviewed. And then, once the site plan is. Considered and, and approved by council, they still have to submit a building permit application. And once again, that goes through. Four departments for their final review to make sure it's in conformance with what they had originally looked at on the site plan side. Which I, I left out traffic. Hal also looks at traffic and any, whether or not a traffic impact analysis is necessary. So no, it is not just me.
Or the people who report to you.
Or the people that reports to me, no. So there's, there's any point in a, in that system. Where a site plan could be held up because they haven't satisfied another department's requests or review needs to, to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are you aware of SB eleven oh three? This is lead into my question. No, I know you.
Yes.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have. We did a lot of legislative stuff lately.
And that's.
This is really interesting, because there was a bill reported out on an eight zero bipartisan vote. I mean, everybody loves it. And the bill was why Warren Peterson from Gilbert, which would authorize municipalities to delegate by ordinance, city staff review and approve site plans. Developing plans, preliminary plans, final plans, design review plans based on objective standards. Without a public hearing. So, I mean, the, the trend is exactly the opposite of. Is, is towards less. Counsel and commission review and more staff review. And it was unanimously approved. Which is having been down to legislature a couple of times recently, that's amazing, because everything's a fight down there. So.
Yeah, I'd like to see this as a discussion among those of us up here on the council and our experts there. I agree that the approval of a given site plan is administrative. If they are following the codes, we really don't have the ability to say no. But we also need to have a way of a discussion and bring in the desires of the public. And some of those will come forward as people look at these particular site plans. They can't change that site plan because they've met our criteria. But there, it, it seems to be an opportunity for the community to speak to us. And to be able to say, well, you know, this particular thing just doesn't seem right. Why don't you guys have an ordinance that covers this? And, and I, and I do want to open this up as a council discussion, and I, I appreciate Mr. Brechner, what you'll have to say.
Yeah, you know, I think that's why we gave you guys the options, right? Because, you know, you don't have to go ahead and say, no, strictly administrative, we don't want to see it at the town council level. That's when at the first reading, there was discussion about putting on the consent agenda, so that if any resident wanted to come and talk about it or voice themselves. They would have the, the forum and ability to do so after notice. The issue for you, for myself and the planning commission was that. You, this, we were put in this awkward position of. We can't say no, the applicant shows up, we say yes, off it goes. Now, so the way this was structured for, for you guys to consider was to leave that door open for exactly what you're talking about. If the council is interested in hearing from potential residents regarding their opinions, albeit you can't say no. Without consequences. You have that opportunity with, I believe, at the first reading was for, to put it on a consent agenda. So that it can be removed from the consent agenda if a resident appeared and wanted to talk about it. So you have that.
So between first and second reading is an opportunity for the public to express their.
No, perhaps I've mis, miscommunicated.
Okay.
When there is an applicant with a site plan.
Right.
And they present that site plan, and under our current processes, they can't just have an administrative process. That's where they show they're in compliance, site plans approved, then they submit for a building permit and so on. Now they have to go, you know, meet all the requirements, get the staff to approve that. Then it goes to the planning commission at some future date. The planning, you know, commission then. Reviews it. We run in, we, we've run into issues. I have personally run into an issue with a member of the commission wanting to impose. Conditions on an applicant outside of our code. That's problematic. We don't want to run into that problem. You guys certainly wouldn't want to have to deal with that. And so, once it goes from there, then it goes to the town council, okay? And so what I'm saying is, is that. I, I personally, I think it should be a, a administrative act as that eight zero vote was. But if this, if our council feels so inclined to give that forum availability. To residents to come and voice themselves. I'm not happy about this business. I'm not happy about this building, whatever it may be. Even though you really can't say no to the applicant, it does give that voice to the, to that resident. And input for you in, in, in the, in the event, there's ideas that are spawned from that. For changes to our, future changes to our code. Or, or, and that's, and that's one way to handle it. And that's, I think, efficient. I don't know how many times anybody's going to come down and actually ask to remove it from a consent agenda to discuss it. But there will be that opportunity i- is one of the options that we've laid out for you.
Okay, other, other.
And I, and I was hoping to have this discussion within the council about how other people in the council feel.
It's not the time yet.
Okay, you're right.
Gentlemen, my recollection is with every site plan that I've ever seen sitting up here, there's nine or ten or maybe twelve. Stipulations that are, that are consistent on every single one of them. How many are there exactly?
Sure, the conditions of approval may vary by the anticipated use. As far as, you know, requiring a grease interceptor for a restaurant, for example, or something like that, that may not be a standard across the board. But you're right, I believe there, there are twelve generally standard conditions that would apply to any commercial development. Correct, yeah, they're in the, for the most part. They're just restatements of various ordinances, design guidelines, town code. Regarding, you know, water and wastewater connections, those types of things that are just standard across. And then we've got kind of a, a bag of different ones, like I, like I use the grease interceptor as an example that we'll pull from for a specific case. But they're all, they're all vetted, they're all standard.
Which, which all makes sense for, for the, the use of the building they're, they're intending to, to build. One of the things I recall, Mr. Sims, pay attention. One of the things I recall from, from the history here was, was looking at a site plan for development. That had all of the things that you're discussing, and then it went way beyond. And it precluded the developer from using a particular public road to access their project. And the developer actually agreed with that stipulation, otherwise it never would have passed. But had he not agreed with that, Mr. Sims, what would the outcome of that have been? Were we to preclude someone from utilizing a public road to access a building site? It would have been a secondary access, but public nonetheless.
There would have been two claims, one of which certainly would have gotten the applicant attorney's fees under the federal statute. You would have violated the, you would have imposed a requirement, it's not one of the objective criteria in the site plan. Mr. Breck is right. You, you, once the criteria met, you cannot change the criteria. But then in terms of the criteria, you've denied them use of a public road, so you'd be sued on that one, you'd lose on both.
So it, it's one of those things where, where folks' emotions actually can get ahead of. The requirements, which is pretty scary, because this, this town has a history way back when of, of. Being in Superior Court quite a bit and learning the term arbitrary and capricious, which is not a good thing to achieve in a, in a. Lawsuit. So I, I, I see no problem. Well, actually, it's not time to give an opinion.
Stayed, stick to question, any more questions?
No more questions on that, I think, I think.
There is public comment.
David Phelps.
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. You'll notice on the list that was provided by Luke, a number of those municipalities, they do have design review. We should be going towards design review. We've grown a lot in the last thirty years since our. We've grown a lot in the last thirty years since our ordinance was assembled, put together, cobbled together. We fought to get Cave Creek to be a better place to live. We shouldn't, we should not expose our current residents and our future residents to the current box style risk we have of the lowest common denominator of building like we did for the Sprouts building, that whole entire complex is nothing but a bunch of boxes and rectangles. There's no design implemented there. There's no shade implemented there, tractor supply. It's another hideous looking development along with AutoZone. It surprising myself, I'm going to tell you. Our Walmart has nice braking along the, it's got a nice brake along the elevation. And there was more emphasis on design review when that was permitted than what I'm telling you is should not be allowed in town. The only way to get to where we need to go is to implement design review. It is going to be a site plan function. It's great that you guys are embracing having a conversation. I think six months ago, we wouldn't have had this much conversation. And I enjoy hearing what each of you have to say on this. I'm very hopeful that what we can do is come together with the idea that, hey, Sedona has design review, Flagstaff has it, Scottsdale has it, Carefree has it. Why can't Cave Creek have it? Because we're afraid. I don't think that's a reasonable answer to that question. I think what we should reasonably do is come up with some development standards that we can check the box that those standards have been met. And we may even be able to get with the right design review, which could be a function of the planning commission, you know, three people out of the planning commission could work on the design review with the developer. People could come in from the audience and see how the plan is developing. But we are going to have to put some standards together, and I think the best way for us to do it is the model legislation. How are other cities accomplishing what we seem to be able to avoid? How do we make Cave Creek look like any town USA Midwestern development? I don't think it's what we want to be, folks. I think we can be better. And I think the only way to be better is take the time, take the chance and do the job right. Last time I spoke on.
That's been three, I wasn't timing it, but wrap it up here.
Could I just ask one question real quick? I don't know of whom. This design review committee that you're advocating, is this just for commercial properties?
Yes, it would be commercial only. Anybody who takes what I say up here as far as a recommendation for commercial zoning, I would even stipulate that for the commercial design review that the that the commercial development has gone so well in the town core that I think there's innate pressure on the development community to make it more like what they're seeing is the positive thing that draws the people here. You know, how would you emulate that? You have to come in here and try to make it different enough that people want to come visit you. That's not what they did out there. So.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
No additional.
Turn it slips in, please. You should you should do that start of the meeting.
Carol Perry. I'm Carol Perry, forty-nine, forty-four, East Sawmill Circle in Cave Creek. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for hearing me today. I am going to talk about this, but I just want to say one thing because you're still here. I took that Hall and Center CPR class, smartest thing I ever did. Everybody should take that class and you did such a fine job. I was nervous about CPR because it had been over fifteen years and you made it so easy to learn and feel confident in. I feel like if something happened and I was there, I could save somebody. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I have this sense that all this conversation is putting the cart before the horse. We're talking about things, once they have a site plan and it and it fits what the ordinance says, we have no discussion. I would like us to reconsider this ordinance. We have three ordinance lists, commercial buffer, which you may or may not change tonight, to intermediate buffer, town core, commercial and general commercial. If you look at those three categories and everything that can happen in those three places, and I have it right here, only fourteen things can happen in general commercial that can't happen in commercial buffer. And I know there's a concern that we, the humans living in houses around here think the buffer word means protection. And I've learned from all the reading that it doesn't mean protection. I would like you to consider having another zoning ordinance between commercial, intermediate, commercial and residential or desert rural. We do need protection. You have this things on this list, like bowling alleys and hotels and massage parlors and can't read my own writing without my glasses. That nobody would want next to their house. No, I mean, nobody. And we do need protection from, I mean, we don't want to have our backyard back up to Sprouts. And if I understand right, and I'm so sorry, I heard about the food tax possibly going away because now I know there might be a sense of, oh, we really need to find those cash registers. But please don't put them right up against our houses. We're in a neighborhood that's over fifty years old. My house is fifty-two years old. At least the walls in there are fifty-two years old. It's a beautiful neighborhood. And just for the record, because I did hear this the other night, we're not a bunch of old farts living in old trailers. We have some really nice properties and we have some really young people and older people. We have a great diverse community and it is a community. It's a neighborhood where we all know each other, work together and we just can't bear the thought that you might rezone everything all at once into some kind of commercial zoning that gives us absolutely no protection. Is that my time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did not know that something was going to go off there. I'm just trying to time it without. I'm glad I didn't have beer for my horses. That's one of my ringtones.
Monroe Shoemate, five four nine five East Elsinore Drive. Vice Mayor, I appreciate what you said about best practices. And when you asked the question about what are these other areas in the local area doing? And I get a little concerned when the other person said, yes, I looked at that, but I don't really care about that because I'm focused on this. That's not necessarily best practice. Councilmember Paul and I, I I'm going to.
Al, come on.
Thank you. Suggested that there's a lot of stuff that's going on here and the whole thing needs to be taken a look at. And I highly recommend that you, as Cave Creek, actually consider taking a look at that and pull it all together because getting rid of something is going to leave in a hole potentially that something else is going to come in and cause problems. So thank you for asking for best practices. And Paul, thank you for your recommendation. Appreciate it.
If there are any more, the the agenda item is about, it's the process. It's not about the we have, we're confused, am I do, we're confusing all the underlying problems with the town code with this one tiny little administrative thing we have before us. And just everybody's information, we have a meeting, is it on the, we have an agenda date yet for the?
No, Mayor, we're looking at everything else we have on the agendas. This will be part of a regular council meeting and we've made some adjustments. So it'll be one of the meetings in March is what.
We we're already gathering items for a joint planning commission, town council meeting to go over the big picture on what the issues are in the town code. But this item has nothing to do with the details of what goes where, commercial buffer or any other thing. This is strictly the site plan process over which we have no control. So we're it, this little piece is not the problem. The other stuff's a problem, but I think ninety percent, ninety-five percent of what I've heard tonight is about something that's not on the agenda. It's on a future agenda, just so you know that it's it's not being dropped in the cracks. It's 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 going to be out there and everyone will have, it'll be in a much less formal setting, so we'll have an opportunity to talk about it. Any more?
Julie Goldhammer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members. I I am not a fan of extra busy work. I do get what they're saying and I'm kind of for it, but this is like section three, four and five. So I'm an agenda dummy and I'm going to say a few things here that I only have this one page that I will speak quickly through. I have attended and reviewed different planning and council meetings with regard to numerous rezoning applications since we moved here from another part of the valley in twenty eighteen. I agree that we need to find some sort of a solution where the the town folk don't feel like we're losing some sort of say in what happens. And oftentimes it's confusing because the site plans, we don't get to really see things until it's possibly too late. The commercial buffer zoning category, and this may fall more into section five of the agenda item tonight, has been a point of consternation for as long as I've been at these meetings and probably much longer. Renaming the zone is not the only challenge with it, which I know they all spoke about in planning and zoning. For example, aesthetically and functionally, we've got issues with lighting, noise, parking and traffic, and that's let's not forget about density. The general plan mentions the word density twenty-four times in the document and all of them, but one occurrence, say low density is what we're about here in Cave Creek. There's only one mention of medium density and that is related to a multi-residential zone and that mentions eight units per acre. Curiously, when we put that under a commercial buffer, we don't have those same requirements in our zoning ordinance. Why isn't there anything in there addressing the density? Whatever we call it, the commercial buffer ordinance or commercial light or commercial whatever can be written such that some areas can be addressed to meet the daily needs of the immediate residential neighborhoods as it's explained in the in the ordinance right now. Why do we allow two-story buildings in commercial buffer? It seems it would be best to have a single level. All of our largest tax generators in town are all single story. Why do we have such a restricted use chart for commercial buffer? Carol mentioned before, for one example, and I just went into the A's, in our chart use in chapter three of the zoning ordinance, animal-related services. There's feed stores, animal arenas, commercial stables, equestrian centers and veterinarians. Some of them require a site plan review and some don't. That's what makes me concerned. It seems a bit arbitrary. And I would like to be able to understand, I'm sure there's some reason to it, but all of those seem to have similar water demands and or could impact the neighbors with orders and noise. So you can read through each section. I'm not going to bore you with all of those boring details. But I am one hundred thousand percent in favor of what Councilman Elkma said and several of the rest of you. We need to do something about the arbitrary nature of our zoning ordinances in general, including the site plan review. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Okay.
Mayor Morris, may I make one last comment?
Yeah, yeah, this is a time comment, yes.
All right, so first of all, I'd like to just give a shout out because our planning commission currently is composed of a wide range of skills and understanding. It is a really great group of folks who are willing to take volunteer time and look at our town. I'm, I have no quarrel with this at all. Those are great folks. The point I'm trying to make here is that we have issues on the table around the details of our ordinance. And all I'm asking is that we take time to look at the whole picture before we do another action that is piecemeal and we really don't know what the implications are. We just are kind of hoping things will go well. So I appreciate the discussion tonight. I'd like us to hold off.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion. A motion to approve second reading of ordinance oh, two zero two two dash zero five in ordinance of the mayor and council of town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, admitting the town of Cave Creek zoning ordinance. Chapter twelve entitled site plans, section twelve point two entitled procedures, subsection A, number seven and eight, and section twelve point seven entitled amendments and expiration. Subsections D and E establishing effective date and providing for repeal and severability. Your second.
Second.
I did that so I could comment first. We are mixing, this is, this is not about the zoning ordinances or what you put in or in it. This is about one tiny little administrative piece. Whatever we do with the other ordinances, we're still going to have the the right, whatever those ordinances are, it has to be approved. We're not going to have any administrative discretion. So we've had all these people here for all this time on something that really isn't on the agenda. And some people looked at me like, why aren't you pulling the string and getting back to the subject here? Because the subject is the site plan administrative procedure. And I I I respect what what Paul said. I I don't think this impacts what the other stuff at all. We can change to whatever we want to. So I'm going to evaluate this just on the administrative action, knowing that we have a lot of actions still in the works to address the 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 code that by which the site plans are prepared and everything else too. So with that, the second was Councilmember Bunch.
Yeah, to me, this makes makes good sense and and quite frankly, the other things that we're talking about, it's it's not like we're going to step up here and go, oh gee, we're going to have a moratorium. Bill hates that word. On 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 site plans because we haven't decided what we're going to let you build yet. We will be placing ourselves in severe jeopardy by doing so, by passing this until the other stuff gets gets ironed out. However, it's going to happen. At that point, that will become part of this process, but you're not going to slow anything down by by turning this down tonight.
Comments?
Well, there've been enough reassurances here tonight to make me feel not reassured. I hate to say that, but have any of you served on the Planning and Zoning Commission by a show of hands? Yeah, Mr. Al committed. Of course, Paul has, yes. Interestingly, the Planning and Zoning Commission of Old Cave Creek would probably never have come in and proposed to make this change and to remove the public's access to the forum and the chance to comment and to meet with the decision makers that are supposed to be advisors before it comes to us. There is, for those of you not in the room tonight, there is absolutely perceptible stress whether there may not be four votes to get this through, and I will not be supporting this. This is a tactical device that will help a certain type of entree into the community of, yes, property owners have rights and the attorney is here to remind us of that, as is the planning department. But with all the growth, hypergrowth, we get every meeting, we hear about the semiconductor plant and the houses going up to Black Canyon City and Anthem and so forth. Why would we not want to have perimeter defense with our Planning and Zoning Commission in our planning department? Not to say no, but to do what is inevitable better. The Chevron gas station, a gas station at the corner of Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway. And we had to have it and we had to do it. But the way it was designed and the way we partnered with the applicant, that's what we don't do as well anymore publicly is to partner with the applicant. And I know the laws have changed over the last twenty years. They may change again this session. But if this is such a minor administrative change, what is the feeling in the room that this is so critically important that it goes through? What do we, what am I missing here? This is like the vote we had for the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. I didn't find out until afterwards that we double voted on one of the appointments. What am I missing tonight? Now, I do thank you for delaying this until this evening because we had it on the previous meeting and I appreciate the chance to do some homework on it. But this is not Cave Creek. This is not the Cave Creek that I know. And what we need from the planning department and we need from the attorney is no more boogeyman, no more they're going to jump on you. You can't do this. What we need is what rights are vested in the property that we have to honor? And what can we creatively do proactively with applicants as they come in to get them to recognize the uniqueness of Cave Creek, respect the residents who live here and do something that makes sense for the community. Ultimately, it's in their best interest. A gas station is a gas station, but not when it looks like the one that Peter Carey designed, the Chevron and Carefree Highway, Cave Creek Road. I just think we can do better. And if it's such a minor insignificant change, what's the urgency to get it through this evening? It feels like I'm missing something and I'm new, so I may be missing something. But it doesn't make me feel, despite all the reassurances, that the Planning and Zoning Commission should be taken out of. despite all the reassurances, that, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission should be taken out of this process, when in fact, they've been partners for so many years with our volunteers in this community, that have made a discernible difference in the way projects have come on board. So I just wish people would be more circumspect on helping us save what we have left and do better with the development that's inevitable, and they have the right to do it. But surely, we can do something that proportionalizes what is coming, whether it's commercial or subdivision or whatever, and make it fit into this last little refuge in Northern America, County. Carefree Highway is Bell Road North, and not even done that well. So the last ten years, I think, the planning department could have done a lot better with the applications coming in, if you look at some of the things that have been done in the past. So appreciate the time, Mr. Sherman.
I appreciate that this is an administrative process, when these site plans come to us, if they have made the changes that they are required to make, we don't have a choice, we, we do have to approve it. My concern is, has to do with the, uh, interaction with the public that allows us to, uh, craft our ordinances that recognize what the people in the community want. Now, it's happening after we have had to approve a particular site plan, that's, that, there's no choice there. But it has been a good way of communicating with the public, and I'll be interested. I, I, as I say, I'm torn, you've got to approve it if it meets all our ordinances. On the other hand, the interaction with the public gives us a chance to, uh, look at our ordinances, particularly from the point of view where they're coming from, and an opportunity to, uh, be a learning experience for both. Thank you.
Um, while we're being told this is just a perfunctory change, uh, to make things more expedient, I don't think we've accomplished that because we're putting it into the consent agenda for the council. So you're still having to go through steps to advertise, and then for people to come here instead of the planning commission, uh, to comment. So I don't think we're achieving the objective that we're setting out to do. Um, and I also want to say that I think that the Plan Commission has done a wonderful job for Cave Creek. We had to develop Carefree Highway, we needed the tax revenues to survive. They did what they had to do, they did their job, and so I am not about to criticize the commissions from the last ten years. Um, but I do agree, uh, uh, one other thing, I, I don't think that this is separate from the overall uh, goal of addressing our, um, our, uh, our current ordinances. It's absolutely tied in, so I think it would be beneficial for us to wait and do it all at one time. I, because for those two reasons, we're not accomplishing the goal that you'd like, and that it isn't separate and distinct from our zoning ordinance.
No, we're roots.
Seems like we're shuffling a problem that exists in one location and moving it to another location, we need to find a solution to the problem, and I'm not picking on the planning commission because I think they're doing a great job. Uh, I truly do, and I feel sorry for them because they take a lot of slings and darts for stuff they have no control over. And I, I truly empathize with, with what, you know, they have to go through. But at the same time, I think this is part of a integrated whole, we need to take a look at all the ordinances and zoning, come up with a solution, and then put that on there, where people have the opportunity to say.
Okay, with that, we'll call for a real call vote. So we're, um, we are voting on, on this, this particular motion with regard to the site plans, not anything else.
Right.
Councilmember Elkma?
No.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Vice Mayor Roy?
No.
Councilmember Augerton?
No.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes. Uh, fails two, five, so we are on to item number four, which is, um, if we didn't approve three, it makes four rather moot.
If you really want to, uh, keep me up all night, nights and weekends, every day, then approve this one. Otherwise, I would recommend that, uh, this be a table, do we still hold a public hearing or?
Is this a hearing item?
It's the second reading, it's not a hearing. Correct.
Well, uh, four and five are both conditional upon three, so, uh, I, I would entertain a motion that we, uh, remove four and five from the agenda, and.
I make a motion that we table agenda items four and five for a future session. Or for a.
If, may I amend that to if needed?
If needed.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motions have it, uh, the ayes have it, and we are finished with our agenda side, do I have a motion adjourned? All in favor? Aye.